And the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Commissioner Moore Ziegler.
Thank you.
We thank you for your life. Thank you for family. And we thank you for the many blessings that you've still have. This is counting us both individually and collectively. We ask to pray for your continued blessings. We also ask that all of our liberation team would remind us and keep at heart the true purpose of being here. It serves. Jesus taught us that, Lord, and led us to that. We're here for the people that we serve. Give us the heart and the courage to be able to move forward with that aside. We ask these in all of the prayers of Jesus' name.
And Jesus' name. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice of all.
Yes, thank you, Mike.
Because I just saw him on something this week and I know the name, but I didn't really know. Oh, he's no, I didn't ask because I don't even know that.
We'll call the role now Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Moore Ziegler.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Present.
Vice Chairman Sankey.
Present.
Chairman Singleton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, uh, public comments as Terrence Jones makes his way. Oh, no, I'm sorry. That's right. We do. I think you can for I missed that. Presentation of Mental Health Awareness Month Proclamation, Vice Chairman Sankey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning again to each of you. As you all are aware, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we already know the issues and the challenges that we face as it relates to people with mental health. Some of us have people in our families who experience mental health issues, and it can be very, very challenging. There are not always the proper resources to address the issues that some of the family members face. We have a lot of veterans out in our community who've served this country and who've returned home with lots of challenges related to mental health. And so it's very important that we begin to acknowledge our mental health, the challenges that we faced, and that we have the resources, the necessary resources, to intervene on behalf of these individuals in a very effective and competent manner. And so having said that, we have a proclamation or a resolution. Well, it's a proclamation, actually. A proclamation regarding Mental Health Month, and it's very short, so I would read it to you. We also have the pleasure of having the Executive Director of CareStar here today, and I suppose she would be receiving this, Ms. Donna Leslie. And of course, she can have the privilege when she come up of making whatever comment she was like to do as it relates to mental health and the work that they're doing at CareStar. But let me not delay the process. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Montgomery County Commission Proclamation. Whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being. And whereas more than one in five, one in five U.S. adults live with their mental illness. And whereas there is a proven connection between good mental health and overall personal health. And whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, neighborhoods, schools, and businesses. And whereas Mental Health Awareness Month was first established in 1949 to increase awareness of mental health. And whereas there are numerous community resources available for those suffering from mental health conditions, including 9-8-8 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, the CareStar Montgomery Crisis Center, and local healthcare providers. Now therefore be it resolved, the Montgomery County Commission hereby designate May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Montgomery County, Alabama. And this is presented the 70th May in the year of 2024, and is signed by the Chairman, the Vice Chairman, Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Carmen Moore Ziegler, and Commissioner Rhonda Walker. And if you would, there you are. You can come over here, and the mic is yours, and we're just pleased to present you this proclamation. And we encourage you to continue to do the work that you all are doing at CareStar, and let it go beyond the month of May to every day of our lives in terms of serving the people who need the services so much in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sankey. Thank you, Commissioners. Accepting this is truly an honor for, really on behalf of the individuals of Montgomery County. We are an agency that serves those individuals. We're a community mental health center. And our role is, and we partner with the county to be that safety net. Over half the individuals we serve have no income, have no resources. And if it were not for entities like the county who provides the funding that we need to be able to provide those services, they would not get that help. In the last year since the Crisis Center opened up, with funding through ARPA, through the Montgomery County Commission, as well as the city, where that was really able to help us to create a beautiful facility that since it opened last April, we have served 1,372 individuals that have come in that would otherwise have gone to jail or the emergency room or not received any help at all. When you give the statistic of one in five, that's a large number of us, of people in our families, people, loved ones who suffer with mental illness. And so all of us need to be aware. We need to know that there are resources, that we need to continue to educate about those resources. You mentioned 9-8-8. That is a number that is available 24 hours. So if you, we get asked every day, where do I go for help? That's how you can start. So 9-8-8. Make sure that people around you know about that. Help is available. And the more that we do things like this and get the awareness out there and recognize, that breaks down the barrier of stigma. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, we got the, as Terrence Jones and Margaret Lampkin make their way up. I'm gonna remind, is Terrence here? Jones there? Okay, Terrence come. Remind everybody, we have a, probably the most signed up today that I can ever recall to speak. So I'm gonna have to really enforce the three-minute rule. So if you hear a little ding in the background, that means it's time to finish it up. So thank y'all. Terrence.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I want to say first of all, thank you guys for your care for the city. That is very evident from the things we've heard today. And even the last time I came in 2021, we finished renovations of the William Care Franklin Boys and Girls Club, now known as the Strong Tower Community Center, which was a million-dollar renovation with no public funds. And we came and asked you all for $45,000 to help us pave the parking lot. And I'm very grateful that you guys invested us in that way. And so today we want to report a couple of things to you and then make another request. I want to report that in 2021, we received over $58,000 from United Way to give to the citizens of West Montgomery and Macon County as well, funds for rental assistance and utility assistance. The vast majority of those funds were given away. We also have an annual dental clinic, and since 2018, we've been able to do 186,000 of free dental care, partnering with Maxwell Air Force Base, United Way, and a few others, for an average of about 31,000 each time we have that event. This past April, we did our sixth one. We were able to do $26,700 of free dental care, things like tooth extractions, cavity fillings, and things of that nature. We also host Montgomery Volunteer Lawyer Program once a month, where they come and they serve the citizens of West Montgomery and offer them the ability to get free legal counsel, and we are grateful for that partnership. Several years ago, we started a ministry called Fisher's Farm, which actually houses about 10 men at a time who are either homeless or on drugs. Those men can stay in that home for a year for free. They work about six hours a day renovating other homes in the city of Montgomery. And we've seen many transformed lives through that program. We also partner with South Lawn Middle School. We've gone a few times this year to feed the whole staff of the South Lawn Middle School. Today, we dropped off a gift bag for every teacher and every support staff at the school, and we are planning to help them redo their main flower bed, as well as paint the hallways, and do some other beautification projects that Principal Davis has on his list this summer. We also have a violence prevention program that we are very proud of, where young men who are at risk in the city, African-American men between the ages of 18 to 25, who, you know, are caught up in the culture of violence, at least being around it. And we open our gym to them to play basketball, use it as an opportunity for mentoring. We have seen some significant results from that. One young man that I met a couple of years ago, as he came to the program, was literally riding around Montgomery with an AR-15 rifle on the front seat of his car, looking to retaliate because someone had shot up his aunt's home. And today I can report that that young man has been working a job for two years straight. He's got his CDL license, and he's driving for a company, a local company here in town.
Terrence, I'm gonna excuse, I apologize first. I want to make sure we have some opportunity for questions. I do want to make a comment that I was at the ribbon cutting.
Yes, you were. Thank you.
And I appreciate groups like you doing stuff to help our youth, the 18 to 25, even though not quite youth anymore.
Right.
That's very critical here with all the shootings and stuff that we've had. Appreciate you doing what you're doing, along with other nonprofits that are helping do that. I also appreciate that you don't come here every year because you've been self-sustaining. We helped you in 2021, and you haven't been back to ask. And y'all have a great, great program, and it's right in a critical, critical area where you're operating. So thank y'all. Is there any questions? Anybody else? I know you got a request, so.
Yes, that's the last thing. So the request is, we're asking for $50,000. This summer, we're putting on our second summer camp. We're hoping to host anywhere from 15 to 45 kids, three days a week. And we still don't have adequate transportation. We would like to be.
Van, yeah.
Yeah, van.
Do you have a van or?
No, sir.
No van. Y'all, y'all have never had a van?
No, we've never had a van. Most of the kids. Most, from what I've been looking at, the one we're looking for is anywhere between $35 and $45,000. And so we're asking for the $50,000 to pay for the van, also pay for the insurance, and hopefully most of the gas, at least for the first year. And we would like to also use this van not only for our summer camp, but in the fall, or at least in 2025, if we're able to develop a senior program. We want a van that is easily accessible to seniors, so the one with the higher roof, that they can kind of get in and walk in without having to crouch around, so.
Does anybody have any other questions?
No, I don't have a question, Ms. Chairman, but I just wanted, your counterpart standing next to you, she looks like one of my doctors from the VA. Who is that?
I'm Dr. Lampkin. I grew up in Montgomery.
You're Marvin Carroll's daughter?
That's right.
Yeah.
I grew up around here, and so I go to church at Strong Tower and have been a part of Strong Foundation since we started it in 2020. And we're just really passionate about the West Side and Howland Village, Gibbs Village, all the kids and everything. We want to provide anything the community needs, any resources, and we just really want to reach the area.
Well, thank y'all.
What's the name of the organization again?
Strong Foundation.
Strong Foundation?
Yep. So tell us again where it's located.
So it's 2840 Boys Club Road. It's the whole, it's the old William Care Franklin Boys and Girls Club.
Oh, yeah. I was, I was there for you.
Yeah, y'all there at the ribbon cutting. We appreciate it.
Y'all serve Gibbs Village here?
Yes, sir. Gibbs Village, Howland Village.
So what's your ask?
$50,000.
$50,000 for me.
So we'll take that into consideration and we'll let you know.
Well, you can count on me. I don't have to consider it any farther. You got $10,000 from me.
Thank you, sir.
For my designated. So you only need 40 now.
Thank you.
Okay, uh. Tisha, is it Nielsen or Nelson? Nixon. No, it's wrong all the way. Nixon, okay. Tisha, Nixon. You came to Lonnie Nixon? You know Lonnie? I was with Lonnie Saturday night.
He told me.
Oh, he did? Okay.
Three minutes.
Okay, three minutes. They remind me, three minutes. I gotta be a little tougher.
So my organization is Doctors Making Home Visit First. And it's doctors go home, go into the homes to see the patients in their home. We're servicing right now the Lowndes County area, Opelika area, Montgomery area, Tuskegee area. Those are the areas that we've been servicing patients. We had to stop, well, put it on hold, not accept any more patient because of funding. I've been paying all of this out of my own pocket. And insurance takes a while to be credentialed. The business is credentialed. And I didn't understand that just because the business is credentialed and the providers are not credentialed, then insurance, some insurance do not pay to see the patients until everybody is credentialed. So right now, I'm at a standstill trying to get my providers credentialed. My medical director is Dr. Barbara Owens. She was in the city. She's been a doctor for 40 years. And then I have a nurse practitioner, DeRay Williams. And so we're waiting on the credentialing for them. But insurance will pay into the business, but right now we are at a standstill, and patients need to be seen. We have patients that are in their homes that are paralyzed from neck down. One in Opelika. We have one here in Montgomery County that is paralyzed from waist down. And they're being taken care of by family. Family cannot take care of them and take them back and forth to the doctors because they're working. So that's where we bridge that gap. We come in and we take care of them. Not only do we come out, but we send lab, X-ray, IV therapy, if it doesn't warrant a ER visit. IV therapy out, home health comes out. We have partnered with the Medicis Home Health, inhabited home health Baptist Hospice, because we have a patient on hospice. So we are just asking for you all's help right now for some funding for our business that it will not crumble and fall, because we have too many people and patients that need it, especially the elderly. We have a lot of elderly that are not being able to see patients, I mean, not being able to go to the doctor. And so we are the ones that can go in the homes and see them.
So what, I like that medical model. Being a healthcare professional myself, house calls is certainly, I think, one of the means of addressing the health cases for those who are impaired and have limited mobility. What, what's the dollar amount that you need to sustain you until you can get the reimbursement from the various insurance providers?
Well, I'm asking for $300,000. And the purpose of that is because I'm also paying for mileage for the doctors that go and see it, and because we are seeing patients within 100-mile radius, 55 cents a mile adds up a lot.
Give me that dollar amount again.
$300,000. $300,000.
And so have you, again, I suppose you've already considered this. Have you talked to the folks that you've mentioned, Russell County and Lee County? Have you been over there to speak with the government bodies in those particular counties?
Well, I actually have talked to those in Macon County. Had not gotten to the other counties yet. I came to Montgomery County.
Yes, ma'am. So if you split that amongst the various counties that you serve, how much would you be asking this commission for?
I could get $100,000. Yes.
I got one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the difference in your services and if a doctor assigns home health services to the person?
Because home health is nursing. We are actual doctors. Like you would go to your doctor and see your doctor. We have patients that can't get to their doctor, so our doctor go and see them. It's actually a doctor visit. So nurses can't go out and write orders for home health or labs or anything, but a doctor can, a provider can, and that's what we do. Yes.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I may not get this one right, but Batseba Brown, is that right? Close. Heavy Hearts Youth Mentoring Program.
Yes. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for at least a few moments. I am very pleased to be here. Listening to all the different stuff that's happening in the community and different stuff. I'm really proud and all the stuff that you guys do. Have a few different things. Heavy Hearts does a lot of stuff in the communities. We have 20 different programs that we operate. We're actually located right up the street from you guys. We do everything from mentoring youth to feeding adults, children. We do emergency services in the community. We service over 10,000 families. Our workload is humongous. And listening to you guys today, I just had, before I get into my little spiel, I just was saying about the opioid thing that is huge. $600,000 is a lot of money for data. And the things that we do and the research that we do and the information that we have every day, we definitely would like to be a part of that communication going forward, what happens with that money and what happens with that whole situation, because we actually do a lot of stuff with the community with that. Also, Mr. Harris, about the community center, which I think is a magnificent idea, we service the kids in that community every day. And it is no place to serve them but home. So our food program, which we service, is what I'm here talking about today out of one of our programs. Our food program this summer is going to do 5,000 meals a day to the community. A lot of these places do not have centers. They do not have cafeterias, or they don't have transportation to get back and forth to the schools. So we're going to be going directly to them, to the community, to make sure that they, these kids get fed. You guys may not know, but Feeding America is not coming to Montgomery this year. Just decided that last week. They're not coming down this far to make sure that we get that food that we needed. Another crisis, EBT, the increase to summer meals. Montgomery didn't get it. We didn't get that this year. Next year, we're going to get it, but this summer, we don't. So there's a lot of families that's going to be in need of food. It is a crisis. Food has increased. You guys may notice that, I mean, you may know not, might not know it. But the whole thing is that there is a crisis and there is a need that is right here facing us every single day. And that need is making sure that these kids eat this summer. And if we don't do it, and if we don't take care of it, it is going to spill over into every single thing else. Our program is designed to make sure that the kids not only eat, but they have activity to do in between those meals. So we have all kinds of different programs, like when we take it right to the projects, right to the homes, right into the communities. We have 23 different sites in Montgomery that will be able to get food in the county and in the city and in surrounding cities. But majority is right here in the city that we will be able to serve these kids meals. From the farmer's market, we're looking all over for different locations that is right in the city where we can be able to make sure that the kids are being served this summer. So we are here asking you today that we be able to get 10% of what it's going to cost us to run this program this summer, and that's $75,000. Our program to operate this summer is $750,000. And that's, again, being able to serve 5,000 meals a day to kids in this community.
Any questions?
I'll get back with you. Thank you so much for the presentation, for the work that you all are doing. I'm kind of just becoming familiar with, you know, the broad scope that you all have there, but thank you.
If you dial 211, you get our organization. That's Heavy Hearts. That's one of our programs for emergency feeding. We do emergency pantries. Again, we serve 10,000 families every day.
Make sure everybody that comes to us, make sure you get us a budget. I should have mentioned that earlier on. So if you could, make sure our administrator, Tammy or Loretta in the back, one of those.
To get.
Yes, send the budgets. Always request budgets.
That's fine. That's what we do.
I should have said that early on, but I forgot.
Yep, our budget for this program to operate for two months for that amount of meals is $750,000 for the summer.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Ms. Walker, Ms. Thomas, Pilgrims Rest Senior Center. Senior Prom 50 and older, I qualify. You don't qualify.
Yes, I do.
Yeah, you're ahead of me, aren't you? Just don't look it. You ain't got no worries.
Good morning. I'm Sanja Walker. I'm the Center Director of Pilgrims Rest Senior Center, and I have Kathy Thomas, who's our Activities Coordinator. Last year, we had a senior prom for 50 and older, and several of you were generous to us and helped to sponsor that prom. We're coming again this year to ask, as we're getting ready to have our second prom on August the 3rd, and we're asking for, our budget right now is $12,000. We've gotten donation from the city as well, so we're just in need of about $12,000 to have this prom. We served over 500 seniors last year that came to this prom and catered a fair, dancing, various activities at the prom, a lot of giveaways. And so we're trying to have this prom again. It's very important, we feel, to have this prom because we're trying to get the seniors to stay active. The lady spoke earlier about mental health. A lot of our seniors live in homes, and they don't have people to check on them. So Commissioner Sankey, I know you've been over to our senior center and had lunch with us. We serve about 40 to 50 seniors every day, Monday through Friday. We do various activities, and we provide them a lunch meal every day. So we're trying to get more seniors out to be more active. And several seniors didn't have the opportunity to attend their prom in their youth. So we're giving them the opportunity to experience it now.
What's your, what's the ask that you're asking of the commission to how to, how can we help you?
We're asking for $12,000. We've gotten a portion of that already from the city. So if the commissioners can give us, you know, whatever funding you help us with, we greatly appreciate it.
Which, you say you had a portion from the city. Could you share that?
Right now, we've got $4,500 from the city council members. We follow up on the Central Alabama Aging Consortium, so the funding will have to go through the Central Alabama Aging Consortium.
But we did something last year, each of us.
Did?
How much you remember?
I know it's about $6,000 total, but it was different amounts from different commissioners.
Yeah, we'll get that from Teresa when she gets back. Teresa's out today, but we'll get that. And we'll definitely take it into consideration.
And we would love for you not just to give, but also to attend the prom this year. I think you all qualify. We all qualify. Please come.
Rhonda, you qualify. I don't know.
I do. I just made the cut.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Alvin Rowl.
I'm still young.
At heart.
I got a birthday next week.
See, we're gonna be, we are the same age.
No, we won't be. I'll still be 50, my birthday.
All right, Mr. Alvin, help me out. Get him quiet. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Commissioners. I am Alvin Rowl, and I'm with Quiet Storm Outreach. I am the CEO and founder of Quiet Storm Outreach. Our main mission is to go out in the community and serve the homeless and the vulnerable population. And on each day, we are encountering individuals who are going through a storm. And we provide different types of services. We are advocacy for our homeless individuals and vulnerable population. We provide direct face-to-face. We don't sit in our office. We go out and meet individuals in public places. And this morning, I brought my team, Elijah and Marcus. They are part of Quiet Storm Team. And we, we are a small organization, but we have a big heart to serve people. And that's our main mission, is to serve people. And we need resources. This is our first time coming down to the city county commissioner office. And we've been in existence since '21, and we did not get out of. And we did not get, out of loan, we didn't get the PPE or any type of funding because we had individuals trying to falsify our commit fraud on Quiet Storm Organization. So that tied up the whole process. So God came to me and said, Alvin, this be patient. And I was patient and we still serve people. Even though everything was tied up, we had to prove who we are and so forth. But thank God, we'll be five years, June the twelfth. We'll be in existence, five years of small business.
Alvin, anybody having questions? Mr. Row?
Was there a particular dollar amount you were, are you asking this commission for any money?
Yes.
What, is there a particular dollar amount?
Our dollar amount, at least fifty thousand would help us with our outreach services, transportation. And we also receive five thousand from the CDC. And they provided a commercial refrigerator and freezer. We have it in storage, but we just need a place where we can operate. They want Quiet Storm to open up a food pantry. And they thought we would be a perfect candidate. And we like to just enhance our services in the city of Montgomery. And we have served over five thousand individuals since existence as well.
Thank you, Mr. Row, we appreciate you coming.
Yes, sir. And I would like for my team to just to say something.
Real, real brief, because we're already past the time, so. About fifteen, twenty seconds, just real quick, can you do it quickly?
Again, hi, good morning, Commissioner, my name is Marcus Harris. Just, just for the opioid addictions, we were, we were just trying to get some treatments done just to help the opioid, the opiates. We're just trying to expand access to treatment, get training and a capacity for building and outreach support services and research and evaluation. And those funds would help us do that for the opioid.
Thank you, Marcus. All right, real quick. Just very brief.
Hello, Commissioners, my name is Elijah Jackson. And basically, same thing, we want funds to help out with opioid addictions and help out with them and get the resources that we need to help them out. And past, I'm gonna explain to you, like, a lot of things that we've done. We go out and feed the homeless, we give them transportation. One time, we went out and gave them bikes and all that and things of that nature. And we just need a resource to keep on continuing to do that things and go out in the community and help out.
Let me make a suggestion, you know, the, the commission has already allocated a substantial amount of money to homelessness in Montgomery through the city of Montgomery.
They are a part of, they are a part of.
So you're a part of that, okay, so you're a part of that. Oh, you're a partner with it. I was gonna make sure you're partnering with them, okay. So you're a partner, good, I'm glad to hear that. So, well, thank y'all for being here.
Yes, sir.
All right. Charles Lee, that's my child. Charles, you got a video? You wanna play the video first or what you wanna? You wanna play the video last, okay.
Great morning, you guys look very nice. I'm Charles Lee, as y'all know, that's my child. I just wanna come and say thank you all. Thank you guys for participating in Hot Dogs and Heroes. It was a great, huge success. Thank you to Ms. Ronald Walker for accepting our nomination, bringing home to the commission the Hot Dog Hero Trophy. So if we can give her a round of applause for that, that'd be awesome. Ms. Ziegler, I know you was like, hey, y'all sure do love them hot dogs. I would love to tell you why, because we have mentored over seventeen hundred young people right here in this community. And we also, those funds that you gave us will help, it goes towards college scholarships. And so we have a couple of young people and we are not just the ones that are just saying, hey, these are scholarships for the ones that got four-point-os and things like that. As y'all know, that's my child, is an organization for the underdog. And not only have we served seventeen hundred young people directly on our campus, but the countless thousands of students that we partner with were all of MPS high school students. And so first, we have Ms. Ariana Brooks, she is a senior of Percy Julian High School. She came to me, she was a part of the program. Y'all, y'all, yeah, awesome. She came and she was not able to graduate on time last year. And she came and said, Mr. Lee, I am dropping out of school, I can't do it, I forget it. And I said, one thing, young lady, you promised me a ticket to your graduation. She got back in school this year and ladies and gentlemen, in a couple of weeks, she'll be graduating from Percy Julian High School. Now you gotta give her a round of applause. Next up, we have Mr. Max. Mr. Max came to us his ninth grade year, he struggled with English. But Mr. Max was able to work his way up, not only to own his own business with Max accessories, but working his way up to our student board. He is our student board president right now as we speak. And all of the students are part of it, twelve of the students that's a part of. They all said, you know what, Max, you deserve it because Max worked his way, not only does he speak great English, but Max is graduating from Booker T. Washington, Magna High School, is going to the University of Montevallo. So y'all can give it up for Mr. Max, he is awesome. And we have our young man right here, Mr. Nick. He is a part of the Harris family, I think he's your cousin, your younger cousin, 'cause he is the Harris family from the west side or whatever. I watched this young man grow up. This young man is outstanding, he is a part of Park Cross High School. This young man will be going to the military and the Alabama State University. So y'all can give it up for Mr. Nick. And last but not least, like I said, not only have we partnered with all of our local high schools, but we also partnered with our private school as well. I'm sure a lot of you guys know about Value Cross High School. We partnered with them two and a half years ago. This young man right here, Mr. Cameron, he came to us two and a half years ago and was like, Mr. Lee, I wanna work, I wanna job. We put him through our job training program. He has been on his job for the last two and a half years at Penney and Joyce Downtown. And he also will be going to the Alabama State University. So y'all can give it up, one time for Mr. Cameron. And last but not least, I just wanna give y'all a little video of, because I know all of these students are going off to college and we have put seven hundred, over seven hundred students on jobs, over four hundred students took college, over two hundred students to the military. But I know y'all said, what happens then? And so we have one of our students that we would love to tell y'all. This young man was on a bad road, came to the program and now he has something to say to you guys. Now you can hear it.
For your investment in young people such as myself. Thank you, that's my child. And thank you, Mr. Lee, for mentoring and believing in me. God bless, and that's my dog. Take care.
You gonna need to take it back to the beginning?
Hello, my name is Javon J. Freeman. Thank you for your investment and that's my child. Helps to send young people to college, just like myself. I went to Philander Smith College and got my bachelor's in science. I then attended Duke University School of Medicine and got my master's in biomedical sciences. And now, ladies and gentlemen, I'm graduating from Howard University College of Medicine with a doctor of medicine degree as Dr. Freeman. I'm matched into pediatrics and I'll be starting my residency program at Duke University. Thank you for your investment in young people such as myself. Thank you, that's my child. And thank you, Mr. Lee, for mentoring and believing in me. God bless, and that's my dog. Take care.
So I know my time is up, but I just wanna say thank y'all again for the investment. And we have been serving our community for twelve years and these are the results. There's not nothing that we gotta pretend. These are the things that you guys get to see and that's because of the investment that you guys made. I know you guys didn't give us quite what we asked for and our asks or whatever, but thank you guys to the ones that did kinda step up to the plate. Like she said, we served three hundred students throughout the year. Starting out this summer, we have about two hundred students. And like she said, they're not giving us any food, so we gotta provide all of those things and that's why we asked for funding. So I am asking you guys to revisit their acts. And those of you all that didn't say, hey, I could help out, I would suggest you guys to definitely say, you know what, let's consider helping out. Thank y'all again, I appreciate everything y'all do. God bless, that's my dog, I'm out.
We need that young man to come back to Montgomery and practice here, but thank you for being here, so.
Thank y'all.
Lars? That's it. I think that's all, we got everybody, didn't we? Okay.
We'll consider the minutes of the regular meeting of April sixteenth.
Move for approval.
Second.
Consider accounts payable checks and payroll checks.
Move for approval.
Second.
You're locked up on you, Commissioner Harris?
I got it.
Motion carries.
Consider a resolution to enter into beneficiary agreements with local nonprofits demonstrating a negative economic impact from the pandemic and to advance a water drainage project in the Macedonia community.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a resolution to negotiate for the purchase of land and to designate up to one million one hundred thousand dollars from funds allocated to community centers for the designing, construction of a community center in District One.
Move for approval. Second.
It's locked up.
Oh, I didn't move.
You moved it. Motion carries.
Consider a resolution authorizing a request for Attorney General's opinion regarding the expenditure of opioid settlement funds for the purchase of case management software.
So moved. Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a DECA LETS juvenile justice grant to combat juvenile delinquency.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider professional services contract with Dominion Resources regarding the 2024 tax sale.
Move for approval.
Second.
You seconded already? I ain't got it, it ain't come up yet. It already come up to you?
Yeah, it's come up there.
I'm sure waiting on a second.
You just, we voted, you long range out.
But now, there it goes, okay. Mine's a second on there. Motion carries.
Consider a bid award to Walter Craig for law enforcement duty weapons exchange.
So moved. Second.
Motion carries.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education with the addition of seven hundred and fifty dollars from Commissioner Moore Ziegler to JAG for the eleventh grade initiative, twenty-five hundred dollars from Commissioner Walker for Percy Julian for the principal's discretionary fund, and three thousand dollars from Commissioner Harris for JAG for the Coral Program.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion carries. Tammy, can you correct, Commissioners, thank yous? You seconded and voted against it all in one click? I got you, make you nervous.
Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue with the following additions. Twenty-five hundred dollars from Commissioner Harris and twenty-five hundred dollars from Commissioner Walker for the Rosemary Neighborhood. A thousand dollars for the Knollwood Neighborhood Association. From designated, from joint revenue, a thousand dollars to the Alabama Association of Extension Services for the annual meeting. Ten thousand dollars to Alabama Shakespeare Festival. Twenty-eight hundred dollars to Volunteers of America for the I-Lee Program.
Volunteers of America Southeast.
Southeast. Three thousand dollars for the Riley Relief Foundation. Five thousand dollars for Montgomery YMCA Achievers Program. Twenty-five hundred dollars for Have a Heart for Children. Ten thousand dollars for the Strong Foundation from Commissioner Harris. And a thousand dollars from Commissioner Walker for Have a Heart for Children.
And Florence, the thousand for Knollwood came from my account, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider travel training requests for appraisal, county commission, engineering, information systems, probate, and the revenue commissioner.
So moved. Second.
Motion carries.
We have waived rule items to consider a grant application to a DECA for the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant.
If there are no objections to waiving rules, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion carries.
Consider a change order for the rebuilding of the Flatwood Community Center.
If there are no objections to waiving rules, I move for approval. Second. Don't hurry up, we're gonna move. You didn't get it?
I still ain't got it.
You get it, I did?
Yes, sir, I just moved.
This is the second.
All y'all got it from me?
Yep.
Mine's still a little. There it is. Motion carries.
That's all of our items.
Mr. Attorney?
I have nothing else.
Deputy Administrator?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Harris?
God bless you.
Commissioner Moore Ziegler?
Nothing.
Commissioner Walker?
Not anything.
Vice Chairman, thank you.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, I'm just glad to see the people in the process, that's what I'm glad about.
Well, good meeting today, great meeting because Sheriff Cunningham didn't speak today. But you do have a event, you do have an event on Thursday, right? Is it on Thursday, right? Okay. For the Sheriff Foundation at Thursday at Ariad and Country Club, so. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.